Yes, you may. Councilmember Kelly.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Wait, roll call, please.
Yes, you may. Councilmember Kelly.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
It's a matrix.
Councilmember Turner is not present. Councilmember.
It's a matrix.
Councilmember Turner is not present.
Councilmember McCafferty?
Councilmember. Councilmember McCafferty?
I'm here via video. I'm here via video. I can hear you.
Everybody use your command voice.
I'm here via video. I can hear you.
Everybody use your command voice.
So excited for technology to catch up.
So excited for technology to catch up.
He probably turned me off, but. Alright, let's try again. Councilmember Kelly.
Present.
Councilmember Turner is not present yet.
Alright, let's try again. Councilmember McCafferty.
He said here.
Here, but can't hear him. Councilmember Armstrong?
Here.
Councilmember Grineal?
Here.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Here.
Mayor Miller?
Here.
And Mr. McGuire.
Item two, presentation and discussion by Matrix Design Group regarding the general plan process. Lori?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have our general plan consulting team with us. Well, the representatives of the team, our project manager, Terry Hogan. She is ready to give a presentation to you about the general plan rewrite that we are just about to start.
Okay. Do you know the three-slide rule?
I only have 35 slides.
Well, it's fine, as long as you divide that by like 11 and 1/2 or something.
Okay, I'm gonna cut it down to about 15.
Okay.
I like her.
Okay. Mayor, members of council, Lori, town manager, thank you so much. We are very excited to be here, to be selected to be the general plan consultant. I wanted to, first off, by starting and saying thank you to staff and the selection committee. I see several of you here tonight. We're super excited about this effort, and I'm excited to present a few things to you tonight. So with that, on to the 50 slides.
One.
Oh, oh, okay.
Two, three.
That's one. That's one of three. Am I done? Okay. Okay, so this is gonna be real brief, Mayor.
Okay.
Okay, this is what I'm gonna present tonight. I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about the Matrix team, about Matrix itself, the process, the schedule, and then open it up for questions.
Okay.
One, two, three. So with that, just a little bit about our group. We're a, we're a local group in that we have a office in the Phoenix area. So we have an Arizona office, we have nationwide, we have, our main offices in Denver, Colorado, Maryland, we have an office in Guam as well, and San Antonio, Texas. We have been in business since founded in 1999 by a group of planners and engineers that wanted to start a business that was a little bit different, a little creative. They had been in the business for several years, and they've, they started this business. We have grown to about 175 folks in our company. So we're a mid-sized business, and we're all, it's an employee-owned company.
Nice.
So we have done work across the nation and into the territories. Many, I'll talk about some of the general plan and the comprehensive plans that we've done in Arizona, as well as nationwide. Primarily, we have two parts of our business. We do general plan, comprehensive plan sort of things, and we do military compatibility planning. So there's kind of a two-pronged effort of what we do in our company. We have several centers of excellence that we talk about, engineering excellence, landscaping, planning, et cetera. The one that you'll be working with most besides planning will be our GIS Center of Excellence, which is, which is a mapping center of excellence, and I'll talk about that in a little bit. I'm really, it's only gonna be about five minutes more.
Okay, sure. I don't believe you.
Public out. This is just the summary slide. Do you feel like I'm a talker?
Go ahead.
I am, yeah. Okay, so also talk about our public outreach, because that's an important component of our general plan process. Feel very strongly about that. It's statutorily required, and it's, it's very, needs to be meaningful, and it's an important part of the process. So we are public outreach experts. We have been awarded across the nation, and we'll talk a little bit about that. And then we have several of our projects that are award-winning as well, and we hope to, and we will have the Chino Valley Plan be an award-winning plan.
Yes.
Okay. I guess I'm done. Oh. Okay, so some of the, some of the plans, we've done about 25 to 30 general plans, cities, towns, counties, within Arizona. These are some of the plans that we've done. We've, we've done plans from Tucson area, large, larger cities, Tucson, Phoenix, Morana, up into Flagstaff, Page. So we're, we run the gamut. We're, we're most comfortable in our, in our group, working with the smaller rural communities, and so that's really been our niche and our forte. But we've done about 25-plus plans in Arizona. We also do development, zoning code rewrites, and development plan review for, for cities and towns. Across the nation, this will just kind of point out a couple of different plans. I'm not gonna go into anything in detail, except to say we've done about 100-plus general plans, comprehensive plans across the nation. So we bring that wealth of information to Chino Valley. Not that, that Chino needs to be customized, but we bring some of those lessons learned to you. Okay, that's where I came from. GIS Center of Excellence, so this will be a big component of your plan, a mapping component. We have experts and professionals that do 3D modeling, do assessments, look at existing conditions. We have an interactive mapping system that I'll go into a little bit more in detail in just a minute, that we can set up so the community, community can do an app-based interactive mapping with Chino, and give their comments really cool. They do story map atlases where they can take the history and the evolution of, of Chino Valley and pictorially show that for the public. So there's a lot of different tools in their toolbox, and we're excited to showcase that for you guys. Public engagement and branding, very important. Here's some of the examples across the nation that we've done. We will work with, with your community and with your, your project management team early in the process to create a branding and a logo that meets your specifications, and then that branding logo will carry throughout this process and into implementation. So that we have a consistent messaging, and folks know from beginning to end, from startup to ratification, this is the general plan, and this is what we're talking about. Award-winning projects, these are just a few in the last couple of years. You can see several in there from the Arizona Planning Chapter, the APA Chapter for Best General Plan. We have awards for public outreach. The International Association for Public Participation and Flagstaff, most recently, has honored us in terms of our ability to do public participation and community engagement. And then we're also recognized by ESRI for our GIS mapping skills. Not trying to sell us as a company, but I just wanted to let you know, Mayor. So this is gonna be your management team. Celeste is, is a powerhouse. I'm excited to introduce, the selection committee got to meet her. I'm excited to introduce her to you on the first kickoff meetings of council. She has been in the business, she was one of the founders of the business. She's been in the business for 35-plus years, public sector, private sector, and currently is in Guam. We have a big contingency of, we essentially plan all of Guam. So she's there right now, planning, and you'll, you'll have a chance to meet her through the process. So she's just absolutely wonderful. The way our management team works is, we have a redundant process so that if for some reason, you know, I'm on vacation, then Celeste will step in. We always have, we're always communicating. We always have somebody that's communicating with staff, so that's how that'll work. Myself, I'll be your project manager, your day-to-day project manager for this project. I've been in the business for about 30 years. I most recently was on your side of the table. Retired from public service after 30 years, working city, town, county level. Did a, did a little bit of time in Australia for two years in a small rural, rural town in Australia. Had the opportunity to retire and then go into private sector planning, so I'm really excited to be here to, to be on this side of the table.
Nice.
Also part of our, our structure, obviously Chino Valley, but important stakeholders. This is certainly not a comprehensive list. This is just our initial list of folks that we were looking at to be involved in the process. You can see on the right-hand side, Water Resources, Department of Transportation, the Energy Company, the, the School District, and the Chamber of Commerce. There'll be a lot more as we get involved and we start talking to folks about who, who needs to be involved, who needs to be participating, and that sort of thing. We'll all, also have an ambassador program. So those are part of, part, an important part of the structure. The rest of the team, we had two of our leads speak at the selection committee. Ed Boyk is one of our land use planners. He was a planner for me for many years. Phenomenal planner. Drew Beck, Drew Beck is our water resource planner. So you can see that we have a variety of different specialties in-house. So the important thing is, we're not subbing this out. It's all within Matrix, so we have capacity to do that. We all work together. We have open space leads, economic development, community participation, and the GIS as well. And then we have our support services. So throughout this process, there'll be an iterative process where we're doing graphic design, editing, and producing that document that you, you know, that color copy, beautiful document that you'd like to see at the end. Project schedule and process. Mayor, this is where it's gonna get really long and boring. Are you, are you with me?
He's past that.
Okay, alright. Alright, so I'm not gonna go into this in, in great detail, but I wanted you to see how we've devised the general plan process. So we, we're looking at the general plan as a 12-month process. There's essentially nine tasks or nine phases, and you can see that a lot of them are going concurrently. And just real, just kind of 30,000-foot level with this. What we do is, we, we look at existing conditions first. And so we're gonna be looking at all the different studies that you've been doing, what kind of mapping you have in place. We won't talk about the other general plan, but we, you know, we'll be looking at plans that you like, and building off of those. Public outreach, we're gonna start that early on in the process. We'll, we'll create a public participation plan with your staff as to how, what is the best way to get people to participate in the process, and in what venues. So we'll be creating a plan that will then present to your staff to be able to, to see what we're gonna do, and then we'll follow that. So a lot of those things, the kickoff meetings will, will happen. There's a lot of different meeting attendance that's gonna happen upfront, kickoff meetings with council, planning commission. We'll talk about that. Status reports is a concurrent thing all the way across, where we're continually meeting with your staff, doing status reports, have recurring meetings, and that sort of thing. Task five through nine is when we get into the general plan itself, and we start working on the topic areas. And so just real briefly, we, we look at statutory requirements for the, for the town, which are land use and circulation. So we'll be studying those, those areas and presenting those in, in the general plan. We're also looking at water resources, public facilities, open space, economic development. There may be other areas that you want to highlight in that general plan, but those will be the study areas that we're looking at in terms of topic areas or elements at this point. So we'll get through that. There's an adoption process where we'll go through planning commission. Planning commission will make a recommendation to this body. We'll come to the body, this body at the end of the process. And then, because of your growth rate, not population, the statute requires that you go through a ratification process, which means that it has to go to the public vote for ratification. So that'll be, we will support that process, depending on where it is. We may not be there in the process, but we'll, we'll give you all the materials and that final document for that. So 12-month process, and then the final, the final general plan. A different way to look at it, maybe I should start it with this. It's very simple and graphic.
Pictures, colors.
Pictures, you know, pretty pictures. Yeah. So you can see, we're starting in the summer, we're ending in the summer. Data collection, public involvement, all the things that I said, but with pretty pictures. You like that one better?
It didn't matter.
We're almost done. We're almost done. Couple more. Public involvement process, you believe me?
No.
Yeah, I didn't think so. So this is the most critical component of the process. What I, what I've said before, and I think I said it in the interview, it, we can write the plan. As, as professional planners, we could write you a plan, and it would sit on a shelf, and it would be meaningless. So what, what needs to happen in these plans, it really does need to be a community vision of what the future of Chino Valley is going to be. So we devise a process of, you know, inclusive, informative, validating. How do we get as many people involved as possible? So we look at that upfront. We talk to as many people as we can within staff. We have the kickoff meetings, and we get people involved. We educate citizens, decision-makers yourselves, about the process, the issues. There's always, you know, you can do whatever you want, but there's always consequences. So if you, if you wanna go in this direction, you know, our job is to say, that's fine, and this is what we see as the consequences for doing that. So we, we'll, we'll talk about those as we go, and the solutions. And then validating, going back to, you know, we hear what folks are saying. We are addressing what they're saying, what they want their, your community to be in 20, 30, 40 years, that build out, that sort of thing. So that's our approach to public involvement. We have many tools that we could utilize. Again, these will be some of the things we're talking to staff about initially in the public, public participation plan. But there's traditional meetings, basically meetings where we meet in different venues with folks. Flyers, traditional surveys, focus groups, that sort of thing. Going to, to events, I'm sure we'll be going to a variety of your different events with a booth set up to educate the public about the general plan process. And then there's the digital and the virtual methods that, one of the, one of the things I want to talk to you about is the ID Places app, which is a virtual method of being able to give public input. It's great to be able to, you know, come to a meeting and, you know, get public input, but sometimes folks don't want to do that. You know, there's people that input different ways. So we want to give as many possible venues as possible for people to be able to, to give their say, and to be heard. So those are some of the tools. Here's our traditional kickoff meetings that we have with, that we have set up already. Again, I talked about the kickoff meetings that we'll be having with project management and the town staff that, early in in the process, will be creating that public participation plan. Informational, educational brochures to tell folks, you know, pictorially, what is a general plan, and what does this mean? What does this mean to you? How do you get involved? That sort of thing. Those, those could be handed out, or they, they'll be published on, on the website as well. So we'll create branding. We'll create a special website just for this process that can be linked to your website, and folks can get involved in that way. Individual focus group meetings are, are scheduled, are scheduled in the process. Those will be things that we'll be talking to, to staff about, you know, who's best to meet with? Do we need to meet with a commercial retail group? Do we need to meet with Chamber of Commerce? There'll be different groups that, that are most important, HOAs, different folks that you, you may want us to meet with. You're, you're smiling, so I know there are. There always are. Send them our way. Planning commission workshops and town council workshops. We can do those in several different formats. We can do those as a joint workshop where we meet together with you. We can do them separately. There's different ways to do that. We can do community, community meetings tacked onto that, town hall sort of things. So those are the things that we'll be talking about early on in that public participation plan. Sometimes communities, and it worked quite well, like to have a, their planning commission, who are already appointed members, sometimes they're in districts, sometimes they're at large, that are their steering committee, that, so they'll meet a little bit more than all the other groups to steer and direct that, that, that effort. So sometimes that, that works out. Sometimes communities like to do, and we, we haven't really touched on this real, real mu, real hard, but sometimes communities like to do general plan advisory committees, where you may have different facets of folks that are involved, developers, retail folks. We'll have, you know, some just regular people, and you can put all those folks together in one room, and we can meet with them as a steering committee. So it really depends on, on what works best for the community, and we, we'll have an open conversation about that and go forward. However, we're flexible in that schedule. It's not, it's not set in stone. It's not like the Bible. So that's enough on that slide. We, we have an ambassador program that I like to highlight. This is where, where we extend, so we're an extension of your staff. The ambassadors are an extension of this program to get input out into the community. So through your staff, we're, we're picking key, key members of your community, stakeholders. We provide extra education, toolboxes, flyers, things that they can hand out, and we encourage them to get the word out early on. We encourage them to be involved in the general plan. Maybe they're members of their, their HOAs, you know, they can get us, get us into meetings, that sort of thing. And then they kind of stick through the process, and they're really important at the end during ratification. So during ratifications, typically communities can't, I mean, legally sway the vote, or anything like that. We would never do that. I'm, I'm ethically certified. I'm certified ethical planner. I just want you to know that.
You can shed that loud.
But, but I just wanted to tell you, I, I know. But, but your ambassadors are there to be able to not sway the vote, but to be able to continue to educate through that process. So they're a really good part of the process. I will say that Matrix is very proud of, in particular in Arizona, we, we typically have to go through a ratification process, and there have been communities that have had failed ratifications. And Matrix has never had a failed general plan. So I, I think, and I know that that's because, again, we get the community involved. We focus on implementation, practical plans that, that can be implemented, and that vision, that vision that the community wants can systematically happen. So. Interactive mapping, just real quick on this. We set up a mapping program that goes through your website, is also an app-based, that folks can look at all of Chino Valley. And there's icons that they can pick that we, they customize, that we customize for your community. But there, there are things like land use, noise, and then the community can take one of those icons, put it at this location, and say, more retail is needed here, or there's a big dust problem here, or whatever. And that's a way for folks to be able to really give us information passively, I guess. They don't have to come to a public meeting and, and speak. They can just go on a, an app and just give us information. So it's a handy little tool. And with that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna conclude. I, I wanted to, I wanted to end on this slide. I, I was gonna end on this slide, but then I had to end on this slide.
Okay.
Okay. So the last thing I just wanted to say is, we, we understand that, that the town is not happy with your existing general plan in terms of how it is attracting growth, and how it's not retaining that character that you, that you are wanting. We are excited to be able to walk that road with you and to understand that more. What, understand what the community means by rural character, and understand, and, and put tools and policies in place that'll help guide that better. So at the beginning of the process, I'm just, I just wanted to put that out there, that we understand that that's an issue, and we're excited to get involved in that and to really fully understand that and produce an award-winning plan that also does what you want, to create that character that you want here. And with that, I'll give it to you, Mayor.
Question?
Could you go back two slides, please? Okay, so it says, "Report an issue." So could you explain that to me as far as, I'm sorry, as far as the verbiage, I guess? Report an issue or recommendation?
This is fully customizable. This is, this is for, it's actually part of a couple of different communities. So all of these icons, any verbiage here is fully customizable. So report an issue is, you know, maybe somebody has a concern about a safety concern. You know, there's traffic concern. So they can plug that little icon in, in an intersection and say, you know, we're really concerned, there needs to be more crosswalks, or, or whatever. So that, that's how that was devised. We, we, if you want to take a look of what we've done recently, or what I've done recently, you can look at the city of Page. They have an ID Places up right now. And you could take a look at, you know, how we've customized that for them, and you could just take a look on their website. Page, general plan, 2040 general plan.
Nice. No, I'm, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Tom? Eric?
Good.
Please. How about McCafferty? Is he able to speak?
I have your questions.
Please. How about McCafferty? Is he able to speak?
I have your questions. We're good.
Did you say you?
He, he said he's good.
I'm good.
Thanks, Sean.
We're good.
Hey, Lonnie, are you there? Is Lonnie there?
I may, yes.
Way bad. Yeah, okay. Thanks, Sean.
Can you hear me?
Hey, Lonnie, are you there? Is Lonnie there?
Yeah, can you hear me? Yes.
Yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead, buddy.
Can you hear me? Okay, yeah, I just, I just.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Welcome to Chino Valley.
Hang on, hang on, Lon, hang on.
Questions at this time.
Welcome to Chino Valley.
Hang on, hang on, Lon, hang on. Okay, now Lon, give it about 30 seconds and then say what you want to say, 'cause I'm gonna repeat. Okay, now Lon, give it about 30 seconds and then say what you want to say, 'cause I'm gonna repeat. How long, 30 seconds?
Well, we can't, some, I hear something, but I can't hear very well.
It's good, it's only 25 seconds.
Well, we can't, some, I hear something, but I can't hear very well.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
It's only, it's only 25 seconds. Okay, yeah, I just wanted to let you know that I've made it on.
Yes, go.
I heard the last portion of the. Yeah, I just wanted to let you know that I've made it on. I have no questions at this time. I heard the last portion of the, what she had to say, and I, I have no questions at this time.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Thank you, Lon.
And I don't have any questions on here. Okay?
Awesome. Thank you, Terry.
Well, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item number three. Discussion regarding the new process for festivals, events within the town limits. Lori, this is you again.
Yes, sir.
Please.
We're not gonna see you for six weeks, so we had to, like, do a whole bunch of stuff.
Six weeks?
Yeah, you guys will be gone for two meetings.
I, I miss y'all.
I know. I miss y'all too. So at your strategic meeting that we had with, with you in March, the council, all of you, developed some priority areas, and one of those was encourage and support an event-friendly environment by creating a simple and comprehensive event process and providing appropriate support and promotion for events. So after that meeting, Cindy Blackmore told Cindy, Thomas, and I to get busy, and so we have been busy. We have worked up a process for special events and festivals, and we have worked up a, an application form. So there's the, if you'd hand that out. Sorry, you're gonna get another piece of paper. So currently, the process is challenging, the way it's written in the code. And what we did is, we took a blank slate and said, okay, how would a good, efficient process work? And so we decided that the first step is that they would contact Cindy to find out if the venue's even available. So they contact Cindy first. She pencils it in. Correct. And then she refers them to us in Development Services. We have a pre-app meeting with representatives from all departments that could be affected, including CAFMA. So then we have a, a meeting with all agencies that could have an issue or a concern or a request, and we meet with the applicant, and we talk through what it is that they're doing, where they're doing it. And let's say Frank says, well, you need to have a traffic control plan, because there's so many cars. And maybe there's a dust control issue, and maybe there's a number of bathrooms that have to be had. That's the kind of stuff that's determined at that meeting. It's marked out, if they have plans and things that they have to develop. Everything after that meeting goes to Cindy. She processes it. She shares it with all of the departments. She gathers them all back. She is the point of contact with the event or festival person, and then she's the one that issues the permit. So we make sure that we have touched base with everyone that, that needs to be involved. No one is in the dark. No one says, oh, I didn't know that that event was happening. We will all know what's going on, and it'll be through an electronic process, and where all of the departments are coordinating together.
Go.
Yes, sir.
I know you have something to say.
Well, of course I have something to say. How does this differ from the current process that we have?
The current process isn't owned by any department necessarily. There are some forms out on the website, and it depends on which department they go to first as to which form gets pulled. And many times, they aren't routed around to other departments. It's super challenging. But this way, if they need a special events liquor license, the clerk's gonna be involved upfront at the beginning. She's gonna know that that has to happen, so she can coordinate with them.
Awesome.
Cool.
Thank you.
Tom, whatever your name is over there.
I think that's what it was.
Yeah, Tom.
I don't have any questions about it. Looks like a long, drawn-out process, but if that's what we need, that's what we need.
I agree. Eric. Good job. I agree. You? Anything? John, do you have anything?
What's the routing process?
Anything?
What's the duration?
The routing process.
Just curious, what's the routing process? The duration?
The duration, I think he meant how fast. How, are you asking how long it takes for it to get through the routing process? The duration, I think, how fast? How, are you asking how long it takes for it to get through the routing process?
Yes, I am.
Okay, there you go.
Okay, so the maximum timeframe that we have is 60 days. So 60 days before the event, they need to contact Cindy, and then we will move as fast as we can through that process. It will not take us 60 days to get through this.
Okay, did you get that, John?
Through that process. It will not take us 60 days.
I did.
Sorry, Cindy Thomas.
How do we resolve conflicts where two people are asking for the same venue?
Cindy Thomas.
That's okay.
How do we resolve conflicts where two people are asking for the same venue?
First come, first served.
You can take the microphone, please, so they can hear you. Thank you.
Thanks for that question, Councilmember McCafferty. So, I think there would be a couple of different processes. Number one, we're gonna look at the one that contacted us first, and probably go by first come, first served, but we will still continue to look at how to accommodate both groups to the best of our ability, whether it be offering a different venue, or trying to split the venue in some way. There's gonna be instances that that's absolutely not possible.
Thumbs up. Hey, Lonnie, you got anything?
Question on.
Hey, Lonnie, you got anything?
From, can you hear me? Yeah, I just had a question on. Hello?
Yeah, go ahead, Lon.
Support from, okay, can you hear me? I had questions on support, for instance, uh, let's.
Yeah, go ahead, Lon.
Just in town, wants to do a festival, let's, an example, one of our nonprofit organizations in town, wants to do, is this something that?
Can anybody get that?
Could you please repeat that for the clerk? Let's try and use the chat function through the Zoom, and then I can just read what it is they're asking.
Or can I? Can I call Lonnie on my phone?
Yes.
Huh?
Yeah.
Is that legal?
Do it.
Lonnie, I'm gonna call you on the phone.
Apparently, he's not in your favorites.
Can you guys hear this? Okay? Everybody here hear this? Hey, Lon, don't say anything bad, because you're on speaker.
Put it close to the mic.
Go ahead, go ahead and say what you were saying.
Okay, so I'm just curious, I'm gonna use an example. We have one of our local nonprofits here in town that wants to do a venue, and it's determined that they need traffic control. Is this something that the town is going to support with VR Police Department, Fire Department, or whatever, in order to do this, to, to allow them to make this happen, or is this something that they are going, this nonprofit's going to be told, okay, it's gonna take X amount of personnel from the town, and you're gonna need to pay this much money to do it?
So, Councilmember Turner, what the process would be is to, number one, look at the situation. The police department and the roads crew and everyone else will be involved from the beginning. They will let us know if they need closures, if they need barricades, if they need personnel. Once that's determined, then we will look at whether or not they have the capability of providing that, or whether or not we need to contact out with our own independent departments.
Did you hear that, Lon?
I didn't.
Cindy, I don't think your mic's working. No.
No.
It's not. This one works. She's gonna move and restate it, Lonnie.
Okay, hopefully you can hear me now. So that's gonna be determined at the very beginning of the process, when we have a group meeting, our pre-application meeting. The police department will be involved, Public Works, or any of the other individuals, and they will be able to determine if those needs are essential, or if those needs need to happen. And then from there, we will go ahead and help them figure out whether or not that is something they're able to do internally with their organization, or if it's something that we need to look at within the town, and then figure out how we're able to make that possible for them. Our goal will be to make sure that everyone has the right and the equal, the equality to be able to use our facilities in the best way they can.
Did you get it that time?
Yeah, I did. And, and the reason I brought that up is, in the past, you know, I'm going back years and years and years, we've had issues where something was going to be done, and a nonprofit was, said, well, you know, you've got to have security, and so you're gonna pay overtime to the police department for X amount of officers, and it, it just made it unviable. You know, it, you, you're working with volunteers, and a lot of times on a shoestring of money anyway. So I was just curious how that was going to, you know, how that was gonna work. It could be for security, or traffic control, or whatever. It's really nice that i- if a group is coming in and doing something for the community, not for a profit, but for the community, that they get the support, you know, of the town to not overburden them with costs. That was really where I was going.
So one thing that we would probably try to accomplish is continuing using some of our outside resources, or encouraging the group to use some of our outside resources. For example, if it's a parking need that they need, we would suggest them go through the Arizona Rangers. They can also use them for security. For our beer garden applicants, yes, we still encourage police involvement. However, as long as they have supervision on site and security that passes the checks, if you will, they will be able to use that instead of having to hire out law enforcement.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Anything else? I'm sorry, anything else on that?
Not for me.
Okay, sir. Hang on, I'm just gonna leave you on the phone, okay?
Yeah.
All right. So no more discussion on the events application process. Item four, discussion regarding creation of a building advisory board. Again, Lori.
That's right. Thank you, Mayor. So our current code has about two sentences about a, an appeals board, but truly, our building official needs a building advisory board as well as the appeals board portion. And so my recommendation is that we create a building advisory and appeals board that the council appoints, that we have them available for the, the building official when he has situations out in the field, that maybe he makes a call and the homeowner or the, the construction company disagrees. This would be a board that they could go to and talk through those issues if they can't seem to resolve those out in the field. It's also the group, that when we go through new codes, the new building codes, that, that, that group would be the key group that would help with that. My experience with building advisory boards is that many times, they will customize specific sections of the code related to the town and, and the atmosphere, climate in, in the community. Like in Yuma, we required a more, an electrical requirement that was different because of the heat down there in the attics, and how electricity, how much, how you, how much you lose it in the run because of the heat. And so we required, I think it was 12 instead of 14, or 14, it's backwards, you know how that works. So, so that board would be doing that kind of thing. So we're recommending, and I'll bring this back to you in, in a code, so that you can take a look at it. We're recommending a seven-member body, three licensed general contractors, one licensed plumber, one electrician or mechanical contractor, one engineer or architect, one citizen-at-large who's associated with construction industry, such as a realtor, appraiser, an insurance agent, and then we're recommending that they have five-year terms.
Okay.
Wow. I like it. Okay.
John, you got a question? Or Tom? Sorry, whatever your name. There we go again, huh?
We have a problem getting people to come in here and sit and listen to us now.
Now we're gonna get seven professionals to come out of the woodwork to perform this? And for five years at a whack?
It's a positive attitude.
Five years is quite a long time to be on a board.
They actually do it, and these guys, because they're professionals in this area, they really are, they've got skin in the game when it comes to how we look at the codes, how we interpret the codes. And we had, we had people in Yuma that had been on the board for like 20 years, and we had to basically kick them off to put somebody new on, because they felt that strongly about how that board works and how important that was for the community. I, I think, I think we can get people that are interested.
All right, they'll be interested for sure, but I don't know about five years.
Well, certainly if you want to change the term, that's.
We could, we could sure try it, and if it doesn't work, then we'll know. You know?
Worth a shot, I mean.
Question?
Clay, you got something?
I agree with Eric on the five years seems a little long for volunteer time.
Right. Lonnie?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm fine.
Annie?
Nothing.
Um, is there any sort of requirement for how long they've been in the area to be on this board?
Not unless you want to put something in there. Usually, a trade, it doesn't matter what area you're from, it's a skill set that you have that you can bring here that's portable.
And how, 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 what's the appointment? Who's appointing?
The council appoints.
Okay, it goes through appointments.
Absolutely.
Uh, John, you have anything?
Mayor Miller, he does not have any questions. He's gonna be texting me if he does, so we don't have the echo.
All right. Maybe the echo's gone if Lon's not on there no more.
We'll try at the regular meeting again.
Okay. All righty. Anything else on this? I'm sorry, does Public have anything on anything that we discussed so far? That's here. Okay, good. Oh, there you are. Can you please, I'm sorry, but could please get the microphone? You can share Tom's or somebody.
It seems for a town of like 11,000 to 13,000 people, there's a lot of policy and things that have to happen to have an event or this thing. I don't know, it just seems like this is oversized for a town our size, these plans.
Okay, thank you. Item five, discussion regarding camping within the town limits. Will? Oh, it's her?
Yeah.
It's me. I've been working on some things for you.
I'll save this for the winter.
Is this the motorhome in the McDonald's parking lot?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. So currently, we really have nothing that prevents someone from camping overnight in a parking lot in an industrial or a commercial area. If we can get the property owner to post the property, then our code enforcement people can go out and knock on their window and say, please move. And you know how long our code enforcement process takes, it's a long time. So if we look at it being something that the town adopts an ordinance that says, hey, you can't do this out there, and it's not in the UDO, it's in the town code, then the police department can get involved, and they can encourage them a little quicker to move on. And so the police chief is here because he has some experiences that he can share with you about situations.
Well, most of the, the most common one everybody sees are the, the motorhomes that end up in McDonald's parking lot. They've, some for days, some for weeks. We've reached out to the management companies. The problem is, they're usually out of town, or they're in another state. So even if they give us a letter, the town can't be the victim of trespassing, it's gonna have to be the, the owner of the property. So getting them to come up and testify and be the victim is always a challenge. So giving us an ordinance where the town, you know, can be the victim. And we use common sense, obviously, if somebody's tired and they pull in to park for a couple hours and grab some sleep, that's way different than when you see, we've seen, you know, dogs and playpens and things outside. I mean, they're literally taking up residence in the parking lots, and there's really not much we can do, other than just, we try to check on folks and make sure they're okay. But once you get one, if you noticed a couple years ago, next to the police department, we, we called it, you know, the Chino Valley Meadows RV campground, because we were up to three. Once you get one, and somebody sees that there's not being asked to move, then another one will be there, then another one will be there. And so it just, it just becomes a problem. So, you know, we'll use common sense. Obviously, we always ask people nicely first that they need to move on, and then if that doesn't occur, at least we have a way to try to encourage them.
Annie?
Nothing further.
Sounds good to me.
So Lori, what if they move from McDonald's to Big Daddy's or whatever, the barbecue place? Do they have to go through the whole process again?
I think when we initially inform them they need to move on, that we, we'll probably have a copy of this to give them that just says, okay, you can't do this. So moving down the street isn't gonna change it, you've already gotten your warning, you need to move on and not camp again. So if we find them on another property, the, they've already gotten their warnings, so the next thing would probably be a, a written warning, and then finally, we, issuing a citation if they continue.
Clay?
This is another prime example of why Chino Valley needs a recreational vehicle park somewhere.
Me. Lon, what do you got?
Well, it's, it's hard for me to hear, you know, what the chief was saying, but it sounded like, you know, we're not after the person that just pulls over for the evening and moves on. We're more willing to make sure that we don't get a vagrant area. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, I, I've seen some of that, and it is something we need to keep a handle on. By the same token, I think as a community, it's, you know, I don't wanna see it get so strict that if somebody's traveling through state to state and they pull their motorhome up and wanna disconnect their car for the evening, spend the night in Chino Valley, and hook up and move on the next day, that that's not a problem.
And I agree wholeheartedly. I hate seeing them there for months on end, or weeks. Aaron, do you have anything for John?
Councilmember McCafferty would like to know, could the new code ever escalate to criminal?
It says penalty C 10399.
My, my recommendation is that at some point it does, because just like with our current code enforcement, if you don't have a way to, for repeat offenders to eventually get to that point, then it's cheaper just to pay the fine or ignore it, and we see that a lot with code enforcement.
Okay. Is that it? John's good, Lon's good. Everybody here's good?
Good.
All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion.
Okay. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I adjourn. Thank you, Lon. I'll call you later. I adjourn. Thank you, Lon, I'll call you later.
All right, thanks.
Call the meeting order, would you please rise for the pleasure of John?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, introductions, proclamations, and presentations. Hey, presentation of special, special.
Mayor Miller, can we do roll call first?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Thanks.
We already did that once, roll call.
Councilmember Kelly?
Present.
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Councilmember McCafferty?
Can you hear me?
Here, via video.
Councilmember Armstrong?
Here.
Councilmember Grineal?
Here.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Here.
Mayor Miller?
Here.
And Mr. McGuire is present.
All right, item two A, presentation of special recognition to volunteers Kobe Shear and Ryan Hannan, who were instrumental in the design installation of the town's new executive disc golf course, presented by Scott Bruner, Special Projects Manager, and Cindy Thomas, Community Service Manager. Are they here?
I saw Scott.
Yeah, there he is.
Ryan couldn't make it because he's out of town with, uh, a family back east. Kobe said he would be here and, uh, promised me he would be, but he's not. So, um, I guess we'll just go ahead and continue without that. Uh, I'll give you a little lowdown on the.
Wait a minute.
Wait a minute?
There he is. There he is.
Kobe? Kobe? No.
Good timing, good timing.
So, uh, the disc, this disc golf course was, uh, had been planned for quite a while. It'd been on our project list, Cindy and I had planned it for quite a few years. Uh, we started in, uh, January and February with the process through a vendor. And, uh, we ordered all the material, we got the material, and, and the signage and everything, and they dropped out, which they were to do the installation, they dropped out due to, um, some severe medical issues. So now we have the material and we have the signage, but we don't have anyone to install it. Out of the blue, Kobe gives me a call. I've never met the individual, the gentleman, before in my life. And he says, I caught wind of this, um, can I be involved? What can I do? What can I do to help? And so I told him our situation, and he says, let's do it. So, let's do it. So we got together, we made, we made a plan, and, uh, away we went. And, uh, with that, along the way, we picked up, uh, Ryan. And, uh, Ryan is with the Prescott Disc Club, and I had a preliminary drawing that Ryan had taken, and fine tuned it, made changes, and then made the decision where each pad and where each pin or basket would be located. Uh, it really was a team effort with the three of us. Uh, I want to especially, uh, thank Kobe for, uh, his, I'll call it donation, of everything from cement to, uh, the tee pads and even the hardware for the signage. And so with that, we got together and, uh, we got this in. With that being said, because we did the, uh, labor ourselves and did the project ourselves, uh, these gentlemen, Kobe and Ryan, saved the town $3,513.27. So with that, with, with, with no further ado, Cindy, would you like to present Kobe with his, uh, certificate of appreciation?
So Kobe, uh, on behalf of the entire Recreation and Community Services Department, I'd like to thank you for your hard work, and yours too. Let me, let me read you what this, um, recognition award says. It says, "For your time, energy, and expertise expense in the purchase of materials and installation of the Town of Chino Valley Nine Hole Par Three Executive Disc Golf Course, which is only the second disc golf course in the greater Tri-City area, and only the third one in Yavapai County, this course provides another free recreational opportunity for Chino Valley residents. We thank you for your outstanding community spirit and enduring contribution to the quality of life for our residents." Thank you so much.
Get the little guy in there.
Come here.
Come on, buddy.
There we go. Face the camera.
Thank you, Kobe. All right, thank you. Item B is gonna be postponed to a later date. Item C, presentation discussion regarding water and sewer capacity analysis on Road Two North by Frank. Mr. Marbury?
Oh, that's eight slides total.
How many slides? Eight?
Eight.
I've got an excuse. I'm getting older and the eyes are getting bad, so I have to make the words bigger.
You couldn't put as much on one slide, right?
I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
All right, so thank you, Mayor, and, uh, members of council. Wanted to bring to you, we discussed this at the Utility Committee, and, uh, their recommendation was to bring this before council, uh, to let you guys know what's, what's going on, and, uh, get maybe some, uh, discussion and input if, if council sees fit on this. What we're looking at is, this is, uh, concerning the, the water and especially the sewer capacity analysis on Road Two North. As you all know, there's been significant, uh, development on Two North, or at least the potential for it. A lot of, uh, development seems to be planning. We don't, no one's actually pulled the trigger yet. There's been a few checks cut, so I'm assuming construction should start soon on some of it. With that, there, there's been no real master planning or capacity analysis done for the water and sewer systems. The ones in there were, were oversized for what they were put in, so there's plenty of capacity. But we're starting, I'm starting to get worried about the existing capacity with all the potential development. The potential exists for overcommitting the town's assurances to serve new developments. When new developments come in and they present their designs through, through planning and development, engineering for town water and sewer has to issue, uh, to assure the state that our utilities will serve those, and they're called will serve letters. So we issue those, and we have the obligation to serve those once we issue those letters. So, uh, as town engineer, my goal is to make sure when we issue those letters that we actually have that capacity to serve those developments. So, um, right now, the town sewer currently has approximately, uh, 2,250 customers. Road Two North alone could add another thousand or so customers. That's single-family homes, apartment units, those sorts of equivalents. The master plan usually provides the guidelines for pipe sizes and locations of the lines. Um, right now, no detailed master plan exists. We know we're trying to get to one. Uh, that's currently in the plan for FY 23, '24, the year after the general plan comes in. Uh, engineering-wise, sewer capacity not only depends on pipe sizes, but also the slopes of the pipe. So when you get flatter, it has less capacity because it's moving slower. So once we flatten, going down the hill into the Wash Two North, probably not a big deal. But as we flatten out by Safeway and those areas, we start, uh, worrying about capacity more. Also depends on location. It's not known what size pipes are needed for the sewer and water on Road Two North when you combine all the different developments. The different, the developments look at each of their own developments, but nothing's been looked at it in a combined capacity. This is kind of a, a picture showing the potential developments we have along Two North. The numbers I put in there are basically single-family equivalent units. Some of the apartment complexes, it's number of apartment units. So we have, for example, the Hawks Nest, 250 apartments and maybe up to 150 single-family homes, along with another 150 on the 90 acres adjacent. 150 potential apartment units behind Safeway. 150 potential apartment units behind Safeway, that's kind of come and gone over the years, so we're not positive there. Brook Apartments is almost 100 units, and between all the vacant properties on Two North, this is Road One East, so we're kind of over by Territorial School and Chino Meadows One subdivisions, you could have up to another 150 units depending on how it's zoned. All the zoning would have to come through council on a case-by-case basis, but this is, I'm kind of looking at worst-case picture. So, some of the history, Civil Tech has modeled the town water and sewer system as part of the Old Home Manor Integrated Water Master Plan that came about last year. So what we're looking at doing is piggybacking on that analysis to use for the current system and determine if future development can be supported with some of the lines we have. The benefit of this is that analysis, we could save that and then go incorporate that into an overall master plan, so we're not just wasting money on this little mini master plan. The cost for this analysis, we're looking at just under $40,000 for all of the modeling work and engineering analysis involved. At that dollar amount, the town manager can authorize the work per the Town Procurement Code. We do have money in the engineering professional services line item right now, that would pretty much tap us for the year, so I can't say we wouldn't come back for more if we do this. But, right now, with what we're looking at, potential developments, and again, with next steps, that might be even some development agreements bringing towards council for your consideration and possible approval, based off some of the expansion of this water and sewer system. I think it's a good idea, and recommend that the town manager approve that, but wanted to bring that to you guys, is kind of let you know what's going on, and see if you had any questions, concerns. I also have Mark Holmes, our Water Resources Consultant with me too, to back me up with questions if anything gets too hairy.
I'm good on that.
Eric?
Yeah, with 900-plus customers, I think it's a good idea.
Seems to be a need, gotta do it.
Lon?
Yeah, I'm on the Water Advisory Utilities, and we all felt that it was a good idea.
Okay, I agree. John?
No, no, I was on the same meeting, I agree.
Okay, look up, we're on agreement, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Can we please have the call to public?
Yes, you may. Call to the public is an opportunity for the public to address the council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the council that is not on the agenda. Public comment is encouraged. Individuals are limited to speak for three minutes. The total time for call to the public may be up to 30 minutes per meeting. Council action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, scheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date, or responding to criticism. I did not have anybody file a comment card, was there anybody that wanted to speak for public comment?
All right, seeing none, we're gonna move on. Current events summaries and reports. This item is for information only, the mayor, any council member, or town manager may present a brief summary or report of current events. If listed below, there may also be a presentation on information requested by the mayor and council, and questions may be answered, no action will be taken. I myself have nothing.
Nothing here.
July 23rd is Stuff the Bus by the Firefighter Angels Foundation. It's back at the Safeway Parking Lot. From 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and I believe Essence is having one on Sunday, July 24th, from 11:00 to 2:00 at their place, at the Safeway Shopping Center also. And I want to thank Larry Holt for being out at Skillet Cafe with his wife, Joanne, for raising money for Officer Lopez. Thank you Larry.
I do? Would you like to go?
Go ahead, I'll go after you.
Okay, I'm reading some notes here. So I wanted to recognize that this past weekend, we had the Wade Parker Memorial Softball Tournament. It is its ninth year. For those who don't know, Wade Parker was a Chino kid, and he was one of the 19 that perished in the Yarnell Hill Fire. As a result, the Wade Parker Memorial Scholarship Foundation came about, and this year, between the community center fields and off-site restaurant, they estimated with 16 softball teams that played with the raffle prizes, the cornhole games, and the horseshoe tournaments, made about $10,000 this year, which is very awesome. And then, there were three scholarships awarded. These scholarships are awarded to kids in the community, high schoolers, that are looking for careers in public safety. So the three scholarship award winners for this year was for Trevor Stazinski, Abby Polacek, and Dakota McMains. So I encourage everybody, if you can, it's usually the first two weeks in July that the softball tournament is scheduled, please come out if you don't want to play, support, it's a great cause, and I guess, I guess that's it. The softball first-place winner was TDO, but I'm not sure who that is. So big thanks to Jerry Garcia for putting it on, and I really hope you guys can join us next year for 10 years. Aye yeh.
Last Friday night, attended the grand opening of the new floral shop in town, Old Soul Floral. Lady's got a lot of training, a lot of accreditation in floral matters, stop in and see her, it's a good retail spot here in town. Yesterday, I went to Lake Havasu City. Don't do that, it was 122 degrees over there. They had a Rural Arizona Education Roundtable headed up by Paul Gosar. Lot of stuff discussed, lot of stuff coming down the line. The biggest thing they pointed out is critical race theory is on the November ballot. You can either pass it and your kids will learn it, or you can ban it. It's on the ballot, please vote whichever way you see fit.
John?
I'm fine, thank you.
Lonnie?
Nothing from me, thanks.
Thank you. Mrs. Blackmore?
Nothing from you, Mayor.
Okay, so we're moving on. Consent Agenda. All those items listed below are considered to be routine and may be enacted by one motion. Any council member may request to remove an item from the consent agenda to be considered and discussed separately. Anything you'd like to remove on this side?
Nothing.
How about this side?
No sir.
Lon or John, anything you want to remove?
I have none.
No.
I'd like to remove D for discussion.
Item C?
D.
D isn't dog.
D isn't dog.
Okay. You go ahead and do the motion.
Okay, I will make a motion, we approve Consent Agenda Items 5A, B, C, E, and F as written.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we'll talk about D. Consideration Possible Action to Approve the Amendment to the Existing Medical Marijuana Project Development Right Site Plan, PDR 16-003, for PV growers to allow for a reduction in the square footage of the greenhouses, and the addition of a process drying building. Hi Will.
I will.
Give me one second here. So, we've got two little snippets here that I can bring up to hopefully help clarify any concerns that you may have. Will Denji, Senior Planner here with the Town of Chino Valley. The item before you is a request by the property owner, the Coxes, Cox Family. They currently have an active protected development right to cultivate medical marijuana on this piece of property here outlined in red. It is located on West Road Four North, just west of the highway on the south end here. Their PDR was approved by council back in 2016. It is active until roughly July of next year. That essentially means that there is an approved site plan on file that was approved by council. They have the ability to develop that site in accordance with that site plan up until their cutoff date that the PDR expires. Their request before you, switch this up here, if I can. The 2016 site plan is before you on the screen. The original approval incorporated three rows of commercial greenhouses for cultivation. Their request is to eliminate the western two most greenhouses and replace them with a new processing building and then a onsite grow room. So essentially, they're requesting to remove greenhouse space, replace it with a building in which they process dry package their plant matter for transportation, and then the grow room down below is for starter plants. All of this is consistent with typical medical marijuana cultivation sites. It was just an oversight on their end in the beginning that they did not have one of these on site. I believe every single existing medical marijuana facility that has a PDR within town limits have a processing building and then a starter room as well. I'll open it up for any questions.
What is this zone for currently?
Currently, it is commercial light, but that PDR allows them to operate as illegal non-conforming.
I'm good.
There, I have one question, this is just gonna be for onsite processing.
That is correct.
They're not gonna be transporting stuff in and processing.
Nope, all out, correct.
Okay. John?
I have no questions, thank you.
Thank you. Lonnie?
No questions.
Okay.
Okay, I make a motion, we approve Consent Agenda 5D as written.
Second.
Motion made and seconded for Consent Agenda Item D. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carry. Action items, a council may vote to recess a public hearing and hold exec session on any item on this agenda pursuant to ARS 38431.0383 for the purpose of discussion or consultation for legal advice with the town attorney. Executive sessions are not open to the public, and no action may be taken in executive session. Not there yet. Item A, public hearing, consideration possible action to approve ordinance 2022-920, amending the Town of Chino Valley Unified Development Ordinance by amending certain provisions of Chapter 2 related to the meaning of words and terms, and certain provisions of Chapter 4 related to guest houses. Lori, your turn.
Thank you Mayor and Council. Lori Lineberry, your Development Services Director. Before you is a text amendment on guest houses. This came before you as a study session back in November. The Planning Commission had two study sessions on it, and then they had a public hearing on it, and during each of those sessions, there were changes made in what was brought to them, what they suggested, what came back. So this has been a really good process. So the idea behind this text amendment is to allow guest houses with certain provisions to be allowed to be rented. The key provision is that if you are the property owner, you have to live in one of the units on the property. This is really important for protection of neighbors, and that we don't have absentee landlords. What that does is that that helps start the breakdown of neighborhoods, so if you have the property owner there, and you have a renter, and the renter's doing something that's obnoxious, hopefully you know your neighbors, you can go knock on the door and say, "Hey, I don't like, you know, the music at midnight," or whatever it is, and the property owner will talk to the renter. There are currently already provisions in the residential code that allows for certain size guest homes, we're not changing any of that. We are asking for a document to be signed that we will record at the count of recorders as soon as they hire somebody back in the recorder's office, that will go with the property. So when a title search is done, then your property owner understands that if they want to rent a unit, they must also live on the site. So that, that's the text in a nutshell. We had originally talked about having it just be stick-built, but one of the changes that the Planning Commission felt was important was to also allow manufactured homes. They are asking for new models. The property owner can live in either unit, it doesn't matter which one. And then, there we go, Mayor.
Okay, any, any questions from the council?
I understand.
Amy?
No, I think we've gone over this.
Tom?
I'm fine.
John or Lon, do you have questions?
No, we covered it pretty good during the study session.
Okay.
I do have one question. Additional requirements, A, the guest house should not have a separate primary property address, would that just be Unit 1, Unit B?
Correct.
Okay.
Mayor, I believe Councilmember McCafferty, or Turner, does have a question.
Okay. Lon, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Questions I had was, the owner needs to live on the property. What about absenteeism? I've got my home there, I've got my, my extra residence that I'm renting out, and I want to make a trip in my RV for four months, so I'm not going to be there. My home will be unoccupied, I still have control of it. Is that acceptable? I'm just trying to figure out what must live in the home means.
No, that, what that means is that's your, that is your primary residence, that you're not renting out both units to different people, and that you live someplace else.
Okay, all right. And then, how are we designated the difference between a mobile home and a manufactured home?
I believe there's definitions in state law that talk about that. I'm sorry?
And then the only other question I think I had was, if a person's got, and I'm just asking these questions for the public, so everybody understands too, as well as myself. So someone's got a 2,000 to 3,000 square foot custom home on their, on their property, and they're going to move in a brand-new manufactured home, how do they make that architecturally comparable to their residence?
That could be through either roof style, color of material, or embellishments on the exterior of the manufactured home.
Then that will be determined at the time of application, they bring in what they're going, what they're planning on putting on there, and then our staff makes those decisions just like with any other instruction or process that somebody's going through for a permit?
Correct.
Okay, that was all I had.
Okay, yes, sir.
I believe also, in the print, it said that the manufactured home must be new.
Well, that brings me to additional requirements, E, manufactured homes, mobile homes, travel trailers, park models, recreational vehicles, and other similar structures shall be prohibited for use.
What were you reading?
For all guest houses in all districts.
So actually, the first two words should be removed from that list.
Okay, so it'll read, "Travel trailers, park models, recreational vehicles, and other similar structures shall be prohibited for use."
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions from the council?
Just one.
Yes, sir.
So is the key difference between mobile and manufactured, would it be there's an axle?
I'm sorry, can you say that again, John?
Is the key difference to differentiate between mobile home and manufactured home, would it be the existence of an axle?
No, it won't. And to clarify, a manufactured home would have a HUD label from the state, and that's how you know it's not a travel trailer or a park model, and it's from the Arizona Department of Housing.
That answers my question, thanks Eric.
If nothing more, I'm gonna open up, oh, go ahead Lon.
Just one more thing, you know, like, part of it got unanswered, but, so, I'm gonna use an example that is here in town, double-wide mobile that's been there for years, and later on, they moved another double-wide. It's on an acre, back behind it, it was permitted and everything, for his mother to live in. She is now gone, and so, would he or would he not be able to rent that out? And so would he or would he not be able to rent that out?
We would look at the the dates of each of those units. You've just hit on the the part that's the tough part is figuring out how do you accommodate that which is existing in place. So it would depend on how long ago the the home was brought on for his mom. You know, if it was ten years ago, probably you're not gonna meet the new provision. If it was in the last year or so, you know, we'd look at that for sure.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
In that same subject, the fact that it was previously there and licensed, wouldn't that fall under what's called a grandfather clause? This is just being a devil's advocate.
Called a nonconforming compliance.
Oh, okay.
Is that correct?
I'm just gonna let you go with it.
Andrew?
You can correct me, it's okay.
If the use is legal at the time that you make the change, then it can be considered a legal nonconforming use. And a legal nonconforming use is a defense if the town were to enforce its code to say that it was illegal. It is a defense to that action, it's not necessarily a status on some.
I've left off legal, huh?
Thank you.
Was that a statement or was that a question?
Information.
Okay, good. Alright, if there's nothing else in the council, is that correct? Thank you. Um I'm gonna open up public hearing is and we'll take public comments.
I did not receive any public comment cards for this item. Is there anybody that would like to speak? If you'll just state your name for the record, thank you.
Robert Switzer, Planning and Zoning Commission. If I'm not mistaken, when we discussed this during study sessions and during planning and zoning, we stipulated that if it was a stick built primary residence, the secondary residence would also have to be stick built. In other words, you couldn't mix stick built with manufactured or vice versa. If you have a manufacturer, then you'd move in manufactured and then architectural would have to match, both residences would have to be the same.
Oh. Well, let's find out what they have to say.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Lori?
They're collaborating over there.
Stop collaborating.
So for staff, we did have that, there was discussion at the 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 planning commission meeting, but I don't remember the motion specifically saying that. That is certainly something that you could enforce in there.
What's a pleasure.
Uh I think that needs to be clarified with planning and zoning before we move forward, honestly. If the if it was the will of planning and zoning, I think it needs to be clarified before we we vote on it.
I agree.
Okay, we can go back and have another discussion with them.
Hold on, there he is.
One thing more, real quick, uh Robert Switzer again. We also, we got pretty nitpicky, we also said if it was manufactured home, it'd have to be on a permanent foundation. Uh you know, no, you'd have to have a block foundation or cement foundation, so permanent residence.
I'm not trying to pass this back to P N Z, um I just want if there were, I've been in a position before where I was in a on a different board and and that communication wasn't relayed and I know how frustrating that is, so if we could just get um their stamp of approval on the language.
Absolutely. I mean, if it was the intent of the commission that if it's stick built, you have stick built, that wasn't in the motion, we can go back and clarify if that's what they meant.
So would it be appropriate to make a motion to send this back to P N Z and?
You can continue this to your next meeting, I'll have a P N Z meeting between and so it can come back, can come back to you in August.
Robert, whoa.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm taking over your job and you're not even reelected yet. Um I lost my train of thought, thanks. I, I, okay. Is there anyone, no one here to speak on this that would like to? Okay, I just wanna make sure. Well, sorry, you're the boss.
If you read the planning and zoning minutes, uh Mr. Switzer's notes are in there and that's exactly what it said. Now whether or not a motion was made, it does not appear in the minutes.
Okay. Thank you. Was anybody else had a comment on this? Yes. Any, one of the three, the three hands, now I got no hands.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Sandy Tutabeni, of many of you may know me by the letters I do write. I have a question. What's new? I may define new different than you define new. So could you put it in here what it means to be a new manufactured home? You also say no separate utility meter for a guest house. I'm thinking some people are gonna want revenue producing, so could you define that better? Tell me about sewer and water. What does it mean?
Chino.
But no separate utility.
Separate meters.
What about C C and Rs? My neighbor wants to do it, now I'm upset. What does it mean to me? Please think of those when you go back to committee.
Thank you.
What was your last comment? I missed it.
Please uh think of those when you go back to committee.
Okay. I'm sorry, there was two other hands.
Good evening, Larry Holt. I just have a couple of questions. One would be if you, will these have to meet existing zoning? So if I'm in R one, can I put a rental house on it? So I shouldn't be able to, cuz that's why I live in R one. But I don't wanna see that happening. Um and the other just kinda piggybacked on on what Sandy had to say about septic sewer, they're gonna have to have their own septic system in if it's not on town water, which a lot of the acreage here in town is not. So just a couple more things to consider, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now you wanna come up? Oh you? Okay, good. Lori, can you come back up please? I'm sorry, wait. I'm sorry, is anybody else who wants to speak? Okay, now we're gonna close the public hearing and Lori, could you come up please? I gotta do all this procedure stuff. Okay Lori, can you answer the, I have six items here, one is what is new? You wanna take each one at a time?
Sure, new is supposed to be the current year, so if it's, let's say it's twenty ten in this year, the model needs to be twenty ten.
Okay.
So what about ten years from now, fifteen years from now? If it's fifteen years old, it's still, it's not considered new.
That is correct.
So it has to be new when it's placed?
Yes.
New at time of place. And then uh separate meters?
Well, what Will tells me is that the reason we didn't have, didn't allow separate meters was because the code didn't allow the units to be rented. And that is something we can go back, since we're going back to the planning commission, we can talk to them about the possibility of separate meters.
Okay, sewer and water?
Um if they're on a well, they they would share well. Don't know how you share septic, don't know how that works.
If the gravity allows, they could share septic, that would be up to the county, right?
Correct.
And C C and Rs, wouldn't, would they supersede town code?
Well, we're not a party to the C C and Rs, which means we don't enforce them. Um not sure what we do when we're in conflict.
Mayor and council, the the town has the zoning ordinance, the U D O, all the provisions. Those are your sets of regulations. C C and Rs are a private contract between the property owners. So the property owners can be a lot more strict amongst themselves than you are. But your uniform ordinances over all of your zoning categories have to be the same. So if variations occur because the C C and Rs are tighter in some areas than others, that has to be enforced amongst the property owners or in rare cases where there's an H O A.
Okay. And R one? Zoning?
Currently in all the residential districts, the single family districts, if you have an acre or more, you can have a guest house. So that's currently in the code.
Up to a certain percentage of your house or when it twelve hundred square feet or eight hundred square feet or?
Here's the code guy.
So it it depends, um good evening mayor, council, with N G Senior Planner. Um if you have an S R one and greater, it's twelve hundred square foot livable or fifty percent of the gross square footage of your primary. If you've got an A R property, still the twelve thousand or seventy five percent of the gross square footage, sorry, twelve hundred, excuse me, I said twelve thousand. Um or seventy five percent of the gross square footage of your primary residence, whichever is larger.
Gotcha. And then last, we already covered septic, that's all I had. That's all they spoke on. Okay. I guess we need a motion to push this off to the next meeting, which will be next meeting will be August something.
August twenty third. And the planning and zoning meeting is?
I don't win the planning and zoning meeting.
She has a P and Z in between now and then, is is that good?
Planning and zoning is the
Send it to them directly.
Planning and zoning is the first Tuesday of the month, so that would be August second.
Okay, so that would give two weeks to come back.
Three.
Okay, Andrew, let me know if I'm doing this right, okay? Okay, I make a motion that we send resolution two zero two two dash one two one seven repealing resolution eighteen dash one one two four and deferring it back to Planning and Zoning Commission for their meeting on August second, which uh will return to town council on August twenty third.
Second.
Wait a minute.
Wait.
I think we're dealing with item A, which is ordinance, ordinance twenty twenty two dash nine twenty.
Trying to push us ahead. Alright, well, here we go, that was practice. Uh I make a motion that we move ordinance two zero two two dash nine two zero amending the town of Chino Valley United, United Unified Development Ordinance by amending certain provisions of chapter two relating to the meaning of words and terms and certain provisions of chapter four related to guest houses to defer that back to Planning and Zoning Commission for their August second meeting and to return to council for their, for our August twenty third meeting. Yes?
And continuing the council's public hearing until your meeting. So that you don't have to readvertise it.
And continuing the public hearing on August twenty third.
I'm gonna second that one too.
Fantastic, awesome.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carry. Item B, consideration possible action to approve resolution number twenty twenty two two one two one seven repea- repealing resolution eighteen
Mm-hmm.
Dash eleven twenty four and fixing and setting the annual compensation for offices of mayor and council members at nine thousand and six thousand respectively effective as of the first regularly scheduled meeting in December of twenty twenty two. Terry.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor and council. Uh the town manager's office and human resources collaborated in looking at where the current elected officials pay schedules or compensation and stipend schedules were and are coming forward with this recommendation based on that. Um the services of member of town council require significant financial sacrifices and time commitments. I think most people see you here once or twice a month at our meetings and assume that is the extent of your duties. I think it was uh it was really um obviously when you were talking about some of the current events, you were talking about, you know, a conference that you had went to, the the softball game or ribbon cutting. Um the planning and zoning meeting is a lot of you will serve on boards that meet once or twice a month. Um I know we had a meeting recently that had a hundred pages or more of documents that had to be reviewed and prepared and and studied to be prepared to talk about it in these meetings. People don't always see that. Um and so I think I wanted to take a moment and and it was particularly important to send you to take that moment to to recognize that time commitment that each of you make and thank you for that. Um and based on that, the town seeks to provide its mayor and council members with reasonable stipends to provide compensation for the service and time commitments that you make. Per our town code and state law, you are able to be compensated. We are able to review that from time to time and update it. The history, the last time it was updated was two thousand and eighteen, before that was two thousand and sixteen and before that was nineteen eighty three. Um so, yeah.
You were in office then.
Yeah. Um currently, the mayor receives five hundred dollars a month stipend, we are proposing that move to seven fifty. Um our council, each council member receives three hundred dollars a month stipend and we, we are recommending that we move that to five hundred dollars. Putting that in perspective, uh with northern Arizona, particularly Ave Pie and Coconino counties, you can see the green is current. Um and that's six thousand a year and thirty six hundred a year and we are second to last in compensation in the two counties. Where we are proposing moves up a couple steps and you will see there is that middle band where we become consistent with Cottonwood, Prescott, Camp Verdy, Camp Verdy just passed their resolution and they will again move to this level after the election in November. So we think this is very consistent um with the neighboring counties and communities. This action requires a repeal of the two thousand eighteen resol- resolution eighteen dash eleven twenty four and replacement with a new resolution for um twenty twenty two two seventeen seventeen and it will be effective after the general election in November, one month after that for all seated elect officials in the December meetings.
Alright, thank you. Any questions? How about over there?
I have a difficult time approving a raise for myself.
That's why it's not effective until after the election.
That's true, but for a hundred and twenty two degrees in Lake Havasu City, yeah, I'll take it.
Lon or John, you got comments, questions?
I I echo what Tom says, I I find it difficult to do uh accept congress doing it. I find it hard for us to do it.
Agreed. Lonnie?
Well, I just think since we're starting to get into such high finance, we should be starting to talk about term limits.
Bye, bye Lon.
It probably wages us up to about, I don't know, fifty cents an hour.
I don't know, it's pretty exciting.
So it's pretty good.
Let alone gas mileage.
Yeah.
He's, he's a short timer, so.
I love you too.
I love you, I do, I do. Miss seeing you around here. Um not to sound completely selfish, but it is a lot, it is very time consuming. Um so we do have these two meetings and then every council member has at least two subcommittee meetings. Um that no one really speaks or hears of and there, those are appointed, like you get sat and then you you're given these subcommittees and and that's just, I learned that my first day up here. So um this stipend is before taxes, correct? And it is taxed, okay. I'm okay with it. Honestly, I'm okay with it. Okay, well, there were some objections.
No, I don't think so.
Okay, well, geez, say please.
Please.
Hey, I make
Public.
I think you have to have a public comment.
Oh, we do? That wasn't in my agenda.
Do we? We can ask for a public comment.
Okay, is there anyone that would like to comment on this from the public?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
Please come on up.
Julian Baker. Um my public comment is, why are the city officials making this decision? Why are you guys making this decision? It should be something that that people make. I know it's a resolution and it's been historically done that way. But I think the town should be deciding whether we pay our officials or not. And honestly, I don't have a problem with the stipend because I think that there is a huge amount of work, just being a citizen trying to attend all of these meetings, not being paid is challenging. So I can get the fact that all of you guys invest a lot of time in this, but I just really have a big issue with the town deciding how much they're gonna get paid and who is gonna get paid when I'm sorry, this is a poor community. And lots of the town officials, not elected officials, but town officials are making four or five, six times the mean income that this town makes. And the town seems to have no say um about who's getting paid what. So, I mean, the people of the town. So, I mean, the people of the town. So that's pretty much what I have to say. And again, I don't have a problem personally with the stipend, because I think that it is a reasonable expectation that, matter of fact, I think that maybe our elected officials might be paid, and we should get rid of the town manager and some other people. But that's just my personal opinion. But I really think the people should be voting on this.
Andrew, can you answer that? Answer to that? I'm sorry.
Mayor, members of the council, the the town has a limited number of things that you can refer to the voters. This is not one of those. The voters are always certainly capable of initiative by themselves, of bringing forward something to set compensation for the for the council. But it's not a matter that you can refer directly. You have fairly limited authority in that capacity.
And the current process is set in town code for this to be the manner in which those stipends are set.
Okay.
The legal mechanism for the town to be able to decide these things is to do a ballot initiative, or initiative? What kind of initiative are you talking about?
Mr. Mayor, to the comment, it is a ballot initiative. It would be, and essentially, citizens of the town amending the town code provision that currently has the council as the body that sets the compensation. You would initiate an amendment to the code, go through all the process, and and get it on the ballot to be voted on. You would need some sort of a mechanism built in then, on whether or not each increase after that would be also voted on, or whether or not those would be delegated to the town, whether you'd have some mechanism that it would be done by, you know, some process, whatever the case may be, but it would need to be an amendment of the current town code provision.
Okay, so if it's already in the town code, the way to change that town code is to do a ballot initiative?
Yes, or petition your elected officials to change the town code.
Okay, that answers my question.
Yes, sir.
On that comment, not only do we do things, we do our homework and our research, but the events we go to to represent the people or to go find out what's really going on, there's usually some fee or something that goes on, and it's pretty close to about what we get, so to speak.
Okay, anyone else would like to speak? Oh, yeah, come on up. Hands flying up all over the place.
It's because we're talking about money.
John Garden, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. I don't have a problem with an increase. I really don't. I'm not even up there yet, and I feel like I'm underpaid. No, 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 seriously. When I, when I read in the paper in February about people coming in and get, doing their interview and and getting a packet and go out and gathering signatures just to run for Town Council, I was really amazed that there were no more than four people applied for that in a town this size. And then after that, one of those four people actually dropped out, and I would think that it's 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 a job that I think goes unnoticed by most people in the town. They really don't take into consideration how much, how much time you people put into this. Like I said, I'm not even up there yet, and I cannot, it's amazing how much time I've had to put into it just being down here. So, yeah, I don't have a problem with it, and maybe in the future, I mean, it's it it's not a livable wage, but maybe it'll attract more candidates that that, you know. I mean, I know we have to be a service, a service to the public, but I mean, what Cloyce said, I mean, when you, when you look at gas, five bucks a gallon now. Happy Meal, McDonald's, when you're out on the road, what, ten bucks now? I mean, yeah, I don't have a problem with the raise, thank you.
Thank you. Who was next over here? Never mind. Anybody else? Okay, we're gonna go on.
Okay, here we go. I will make a motion, we approve Resolution two zero two-two dash one two one seven, repealing Resolution one eight dash one one two four, and fixing and setting the annual compensation for the offices of mayor and council member at nine thousand and six thousand respectively, which shall become effective at the beginning of a new term.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Aye.
Aye.
I didn't hear John. I'm sorry, John.
I said aye.
Okay, so we have six ayes and one nay.
One thing I forgot to say, that Laura Karyakas, Human Resources Director, and her team was very instrumental in doing the research and getting the numbers for us, and I just wanted to make sure that we thanked her.
Okay, thank you. All right. Mr. Motion, oh, Mr. Motion. Mr. Turner, can you make the motion?
I can. I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? All right, we're adjourned.
Thanks, Lon, thanks, John.
Thank you, guys. Have a good evening.